Hello and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting the order of the school board of Independent School District 271. Today is Monday, March 27th, 2017, 7:00 PM. All members are present except for Director Corman. Looks like Director Bardalata now has her computer working, so we will move forward. Please stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, we need a motion to establish a closed session upon the conclusion of tonight's meeting of the school board, March 27th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
And this meeting will be closed as permitted by Section 13D dot 03 to discuss the district's labor negotiation strategy related to the district's negotiations with all bargaining groups. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of establishing a closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will have a closed session at the conclusion of this. And do we have an approval of the agenda? We need a motion for that.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the agenda as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And our agenda approves. That will bring us to recognition of students, staff, and public. I'd like to introduce Poplar Bridge Principal Roberto Cantu and Sawyer Holland, who received the Mayor for a Day Award. And I believe we have a video. Are we showing the video first? Sure.
If I were Mayor for a Day, I would spend the day gathering information from the people of Bloomington. I would host transportation talks at a local coffee shop. I would promote these as Let's Talk Transportation and offer free coffee or hot chocolate to residents while they share their ideas, thoughts, and concerns. On the same day, I would allow two residents to sign up for motor near the mayor, where a driver would take me and a resident on a drive through Bloomington. The resident can show me his or her route around the city and show me areas of opportunity. Later in the day, I would host an exploring bike trails with your mayor, where I would get on a bike and ride the trails or bike paths with people who sign up in advance. I would take all that I learned from this day of transportation and form a task force, including people of all ages, to discuss the ideas and come up with recommendations. I would also share my own ideas, which would include a program that encourages walking, running, cross-country skiing, rollerblading, and biking. I would also talk about rideshare ideas, a car-sharing program, and a bike rental program. As Mayor of Bloomington, my most important job for starters is to understand what the residents want and need.
Well, thank you for that wonderful video. Good job. So, Mr. Cantu, would you like to introduce our guest here?
Yes. Mr. Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board, I'd like to, on behalf of Poplar Bridge and myself, I'd like to present Sawyer Holland to you all. As you saw, his wonderful video of Mayor for the Day, a lot of work went into it. Some little bit information of Sawyer, his teacher, as would I echo, that he is, he shows a lot of initiative in school. He is a born leader, and he takes his responsibilities as a patrol with kindergarten students seriously, and he gets those kids on the bus on time and safely. And so, I'm not surprised that he is a recipient of this award. And so, on behalf of Poplar Bridge, we'd like to say thank you to Sawyer for his accomplishment.
Thank you.
Sawyer does have an award that maybe he can hold up and show the crowd.
Can you read this? What it says on there?
Achievement Award. This is to certify that Sawyer Holland is a winner of the League of Minnesota Cities 2016 Mayor for a Day Essay Contest for his ideas about mobility and transportation.
Excellent. Is there anything you learned from your experience as Mayor for the Day?
Yeah. I learned about, I learned about a lot of transportation about, from Bloomington, and I got a lot better at public speaking and writing essays.
Excellent. Well, I think you're well in your way, Sawyer, so.
Thank you, Board.
Mr. Mayor, before you leave, may I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
I saw you up on stage at the banquet. What did you think about being up on stage there?
I was really nervous.
From where I saw you, you did not look nervous. You did a great job.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions for our Mayor of the Day or for the Day?
I just have a comment. I hope everyone noticed that you and the mayor were dressed identically. That is very nice.
I had a question. What inspired you to enter this contest, the essay-writing contest?
Well, I was in the, at the state fair in the education building, and we were walking through the booths and stuff, and a guy walked up to us and told us about this essay contest. And he told us that not many people sign up, so we tried it out. We took it home and thought of a bunch of ideas and made them into like a speech and sent it in, and a few months later, they told us that we won.
Excellent. And you brought someone here with you today?
Um, yes.
Would you like to introduce the person that you brought with you today?
Uh, this is my mom.
Hi, Mom. And you must be proud as well.
Yes, very proud. She's done a great job.
Sure. Was there any other? Sure.
After this experience, do you think you'll pursue any mayor or stuff like that, jobs?
Probably.
There'll be a chair open shortly, so.
I just wanted to comment too. It's so, it's so nice to see the kids dressed up. You know, we went to the hockey banquets and saw all the kids, student athletes in the high schools all dressed up and nice, but to see Sawyer dressed up like this is nice because sometimes when he's in his hockey uniform with his helmet on, he's a totally different person.
Anybody else? Well, thank you, Mr. Holland, for being here. Thank you, Mr. Cantu, for joining us, and we wish you the best in the future. Thank you.
Thank you all.
And that brings us to recognition of the public. No one signed up, but is there anyone here who'd like to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda? No? Seeing none, we will move forward to, if I'm keeping track right, our Part A agenda, which includes board business, field trips, contracts, finance, and our consent agenda. Would someone like to move that agenda as a whole?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving Part A agenda as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No? Okay. And that moves us now to Part B. And I will call on Dr. Dave Heistad. We have up first our statewide longitudinal education data system return on investment research progress report.
Chair Oliva, Superintendent Fujitaki, and board members, I'm glad to bring you an update on the research that we've been doing using the State Longitudinal Educational Data System and our plans for the future in analyzing data to determine the return on investment of our career in college academy. I want to take you back a little bit to 2008 and 2009. What the SLEDs data does is it follows a cohort of students and then finds out whether they applied to a college or to a certification program like a beauty school or a two-year college or a technical school. And every year, there's a data sharing that comes in to the state from the federal clearinghouse that follows students, and they update it every year. And what we did first was we, we looked at the 2007 data last year when I came, and now we're showing the 2008 and 2009 data. And some of it will look familiar and some of it will be new. The first slide is a little bit hard to read. It's a spreadsheet, and basically what it does is it compares the statewide percentages to Jefferson and, and high schools in Minnesota with similar demographics to Jefferson. And the four high schools that seemed closest in terms of enrollment and demographics were Eastview High School in Apple Valley, Rosemount, St. Anthony Village, and White Bear, their south campus. You will be able to see it better on the next graph where we have a, a graph, but basically the bottom line here is that overall in the state, 51% of high school graduates from the class of 2008 ended up with a degree or certificate within six years. And 67% of Jefferson students ended up, ended up with a degree or certificate. Eastview was about 65%, 66% for Rosemount. The high school that beat us was 72% for St. Anthony Village, and then White Bear Lake was lower. But I'll move to the next graph. You can see it a little bit more clearly. So, these students persisted and were able to get either a four-year degree, a two-year degree, some kind of certification for, for technology or medical, technical, or other fields. And then the, the reverse would be that a third of the students didn't have a certificate within that six-year period of time. So, one of the motivations for our career in college academy was to really see if we could increase the percentage of students that have certification in various areas, and then would end up with a, a job that was well-paying and income that would be able to support a family. And so, now the, the State Longitudinal Educational Data System does have data from wage and income, so we'll be able to follow the next cohorts to find out if they ended up in the, in the workforce or whether they ended up in college, and then follow them through. So, this is Jefferson, and then we did a similar analysis for, for Kennedy. And here we saw that overall, 49% of the state had a degree or certificate, 57% of Kennedy. And if we go to the blue graph, or teal, I'm not sure, Kennedy had 55% of the students from this class of 2008 who ended up with a degree or certificate. Minneapolis, Washburn, as I've noted before with remorse, this is my alma mater, only 40% of the students at Washburn had a degree or certificate within six years. And then Highland Park, Fridley, St. Paul Central, all, all have similar demographics in terms of the percentage of students in poverty, students receiving EL services or special ed services. And so, so in this case, again, Kennedy did have a higher percentage that ended up having a degree or certificate within six years. Then in the red graph, I looked at just the students that were in poverty, and of those, 55% of the Kennedy students in poverty ended up with a degree or certificate. So, they had the same percentage of non-poverty and poverty students who ended up with a degree or certificate, which is really quite impressive, whereas other similar districts had 40, 51%, 46, and 52%. So, these are positive data, but again, when you flip it, 45% of the kids in poverty did not have a degree or certificate. So, this is an area of challenge for us as we're developing the college and career academy and coursework that prepares students for four-year, two-year colleges or certificate programs. So, I'll give you a summary slide that basically shows what we've learned about the best predictors. So, we could take all the data from various tests like the MCA, the ACT, and we can look at GPA and, and suspensions and attendance. The number one factor that predicts success in college is GPA. And second to that is an ACT score. So, the ACT composite score of about 19 or better predicts enrollment at a four-year college. A GPA of 3.4 or higher predicts enrollment at a four-year college also. Now, in Bloomington, we have weighted grades, so that if you take AP classes, you get a higher weighting to those grades, and so our GPAs can go up to 4.5. So, 3.4 out of about, a maximum of about 4.5 predicts enrollment. Now, for finishing a four-year college with a degree, it takes a GPA of 3.5. To finish a two-year or technical college, it takes a GPA of about 3.2. And just to open up my workshop shop a little bit, these are the kinds of analyses that the computer likes to do. This one is called rock curve analysis, and basically it creates a graph where it's trying to maximize the, the positive students that are predicted to be enrolled in a four-year college and, and also maximize those that are predicted not to and to be successful. So, your hit rate needs to be over 80%, and we like to see this rock analysis have a total area under the curve of at least .8. Well, it turned out that this was a very good predictor with area under the curve of .88, and it turned out 3.56, or I rounded it up to 3.4, was the best predictor. We can also do other kinds of analyses to cross-validate this, so I did three different statistical analyses and all came up with the, the same cut score. So, we've kind of put this into our package for, for students. When they, they go through the hub, they can see if their GPA puts them on track for a four-year college enrollment. The relationship here of high school grade point average showed that there were 82, 83% of the students that, that were positively predicted. They were predicted to be enrolled in, in a four-year college, and they were, or they were predicted not to be in a four-year college, and they weren't. So, those are your hit rates, is kind of on the diagonal, and these are false negatives, and these are false positives. So, 4.7% of the students were predicted to be in a four-year college but weren't. So, that's a very low, you know, false positive rate. So, that's what we like to see with our predictors. The next slide shows what if you use the GPA and the ACT score, and here it shows that if you have a GPA of 3.4 or higher and an ACT over 19, 76% of those students end up attending a four-year college. And if you're less than 3.4 and less than 19, only 6.5% of the students ended up attending a four-year college. So, these two working together do a little bit better job than either one separately. And this is, this is interesting in light of the, the discussion that's been going on, and actually the law that was created last year. The Department of Education put forth a law saying that if you took the MCA and passed it, you didn't have to take remedial courses in, in college. But the Chancellor of Higher Ed kind of challenged that and asked a statistician similar to the work that I do to, to find out what the hit rate was on grades based on the MCA, and they got a very low hit rate. MCA scores didn't predict grades in college. What turns, turns out to predict grades in college is the GPA. And so, what the Chancellor is recommending, and I don't know if it's been approved yet, is to use multiple measures. And this is the best practice throughout education. No single test score should ever be used as a high stakes to place you in a program or prevent you from an opportunity. No one test score should be used to put you in remedial coursework in college. So, what the Chancellor is recommending is multiple assessments. Use the MCA, but also the ACT, which is really kind of the nationally-known test, and then GPA, and then there are other factors. So, college students know when, high school students know when they apply to college that all sorts of things, including your essay. Your essay is really important, and the young man with his essay is, is bound to write a good one for college. So, all these factors, no single test score should, should be the deciding factor. So, so these are the kinds of analyses that we've done to make recommendations for the hub. The next set of analyses, and I'm, I'm sorry that Director Corman isn't here because I worked with her on a project for her master's degree to look at, is the predictability for enrollment at college and for getting a degree or certificate within six years, is that about the same for each racial ethnic group? And the first, the first Excel file just gives you the raw numbers, but at the bottom, you've got the percentages. So, Asian students and white American students have a 64% chance of, of getting a degree or certificate within six years. Now, this is using the 2009 data, but only a, a third of African-American students and Hispanic students had a degree or certificate. So, there is a considerable disproportion in the percentages, and there weren't enough American Indian students to be reliable. It was less than 10, so the state won't report anything less than 10. You can see free and reduced price, students receiving free or reduced-priced lunch. About a fourth of those students had a degree or certificate within the six years, whereas about three-fourths of the students who received full-priced lunches ended up. So, you can see we do have disproportion, and it's something that, that we will be striving to improve in terms of our percentages for students of color and students in poverty. Asian students did have the, well, equivalent to white students. And so, you know, this, this led to a question that, that Director Corman had, is this similar to the proficiency in reading? It is pretty similar. The two groups that were lowest in terms of proficiency in reading were Hispanic and African-American students as well. So, we know that proficiency in reading is a, a big factor. Then we looked at the enrollment of post-secondary by racial ethnic, and this showed 91% of the white students in 2009 graduation class were enrolled in some kind of post-secondary. This would include technical schools, two-year colleges, four-year colleges, whereas only 61% of Hispanic students and 71% of African-American students. So, those are some base rates that we can use then to compare our progress as we get data across time to make sure that we're improving. And for the interest of time, I'm going to skip over to the final slide, and then certainly you can ask questions about any slide that's in the slide deck. Next steps for our SLEDs analysis is we have an application into the, the research team that heads up the SLEDs analysis approval. They've given us positive review. They've asked us a number of technical questions that we responded to, and we're now in a waiting stage to hear, to get the final approval. Once we get those data, then we're going to get the data for all the last three cohorts of students, and we will be able to analyze for the first time the students who were last year in the Career in College Readiness Academy to see how those students are doing a year later. And we'll also be able then to set up our analysis of our return on investment. Now, just as a reminder, we've, we've engaged two national experts in return on investment. We'll actually do the calculations, and by the time that we have these students into the system for, for four years, six years, we'll be able to calculate what the return on investment in terms of benefits to the individual student, benefits to the district, and benefits to the taxpayer. And the, these are the kinds of things that the legislators were really interested in hearing about when we testified about our innovation zone proposal and also about a preschool program, is that we have the data now to follow up students and to calculate. For every dollar you put in, what's the return to the student and to the district and to the state? Statistic that I often cite is that our own Minnesota homegrown research director for the Federal Reserve did a study of preschool programs and found that for every $1 invested in preschool, there was an $8 return on investment. So, it's a huge, huge benefit to the taxpayers as well as to the individual children and to the school districts. So, then we're going to analyze, analyze college outcomes for different groups. So then we're going to analyze college outcomes for different groups of students. We'll validate the findings from our 2008 and 2009 analysis. And we'll do an analysis of students going way back to the first years when we had a gifted program. We're going to see if those kids are in second, third, fourth grade, where they are now, using the SLEDs data. So I'm looking forward to doing that. And I also would appreciate getting any ideas that you might have about analyses. Once I have this wealth of data, then I'm going to be able to do a lot more problem solving and identifying critical variables for policy. So we will have to, we will get de-identified data. I put in for the whole state and they pushed back a little and said, would the whole metro be okay? And I said, well, that's okay. So what we're going to do is take our college and career readiness students and we're going to compare them to a matched sample of students with the same demographics and test scores. And then we'll see if the outcomes for our BCCA students are as good or better than the matched sample. We will get salaries. We will do this cost savings analysis and we will do the ROI calculation. So that's what I had prepared for tonight. I'd be glad to take any questions.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Heistat, for all this information. I only have ten questions. But I'll just begin. When you mentioned that a dollar investment in preschool returns eight dollars, at what point, when they graduate from high school?
Well, this was a twenty-year study of the Perry preschool program. So it's by the time they were through K-12 and, you know. And what you do with the return on investment is you not only calculate the benefits to better reading and math scores, but you also have social outcomes. So you can compare to see whether students that were in the program have less reliance on social services, less incarceration in prisons. And so that's the nice thing about our economists is they have available to them large databases where they can say what the return on investment is to taxpayers for not having students wandering or not having students, you know, in trouble with the law, et cetera.
So are they tracked then from preschool all the way?
Yeah, these two major studies on preschool were done with major grants from the federal government. And they were able to track the students, I think, until they were about nineteen, twenty years old. So it's a very robust finding. And so I remind legislators when they're thinking about cutting all the voluntary pre-K from the governor's budget that, you know, this is a very conservative group, the Federal Reserve. And they're saying, this is the best return on investment you can get.
And did the students know they were being tracked?
Yeah, the parents volunteered them early.
Okay.
So University of Minnesota did a longitudinal study also where they had a preschool, kind of like a lab, where the families then had free preschool. And then the investigators obviously were testing everything under the sun. And they followed those students. One of my first interns, when I was in Minneapolis, wrote up a study on the dropouts. And the kids that were involved in this study, moving forward from preschool on, had far less dropouts than similar students.
And then really the last one is about Deeds. You know, the Department of Economic Development. They should be more than happy to release information or share information with what we're trying to do or what the education.
Actually, they were pretty excited about this project. And we met with the Commissioner of Higher Ed and his team. He put a fire kind of under the department and said, let's do this. Everybody had thought that we could do this without social security number. We could go through the Department of Motor Vehicles and do matching there. And so no social security number is associated with these students going forward. I know that's a big privacy concern. So we were so excited when we met with the commissioner several months ago. And they'd already finished this project ahead of schedule. So that's going to be a very helpful set of data for us investigating any of our, you know, innovations at high school going on to post-secondary.
Director Burks.
David, thanks for bringing this information. I too was interested to see how my alma mater Washburn was doing.
Yeah, you and I.
I'm sure they were doing much better when I was there.
Cheer for the origin blue, right?
I do have a question. I'm sorry, I don't know what frame number it is. It's the class of 2009 SLEDs data. And you have all students, Asian, Hispanic, African-American, white, free and reduced, full price across the top.
Yes.
The question I have when I see a column that has full price and free and reduced, is it possible that some of the students in the other categories are perhaps doubling in the free and reduced category? And then how does, does that skew those numbers? And if so, how does that?
So there are basically two factors. One is racial ethnic and the other is free and reduced lunch. And obviously, each student that's in the racial ethnic will also be in a category in free or reduced. And so I did the analysis separately. And so, you know, if you were to do an analysis of free and reduced lunch within a racial ethnic category, that would be interesting too. But for this presentation, I decided not to make it that complex.
Okay.
But yeah, it is true that free and reduced price lunch, students who have received support with their lunch actually have the lowest overall rate of participation in college and the lowest rate of certification within six years.
Okay. I just, when I saw that, I wasn't necessarily seeing clearly if there was a distinction between all the different groups.
Yep.
Thank you.
Question?
Any other questions?
I had a similar question as Director Burks. When I was looking at, when he broke it out, enrolled by racial ethnic category, that doesn't factor in English language learners and all that, correct?
Yes. And for our analysis of the BCCA data, I will have the ELL percentages for those students. And so we will definitely attend to that. I could do a follow-up analysis with each one of these racial ethnic groups and put in the EL within Asian, the EL within Hispanic, the EL within African-American. And for anybody else who'd like to do a master's paper, maybe we could do that one next. No, I'd be glad to do the follow-up analysis for the board.
Yeah, I think something like that helps us understand if it's a cultural barrier or a language barrier or where the barrier is. Because if you take away all the English language learners and all of a sudden the number jumps twenty-five points, and we say, okay, well, the issue isn't cultural as much as it is we have a high concentration in that racial category that are learning language. So then we know where to concentrate our resources.
Thank you. I'll do that with the next iteration here.
All right, well, thank you very much for presenting. And I believe next up is our insurance committee report. And I'm going to call on Mary Burrows, I believe. And as she's coming up to the podium, I'll ask our two high school reps if they would like to give their updates. As you can walk slowly. I forgot, I went out of order.
All right. So at Kennedy, first, I would like to formally apologize for missing the previous meeting I was supposed to. Next, our Kennedy's Science Olympiad team placed eighth in state. Kennedy's Got Talent was this past Friday. And we had a lot of people with extraordinary talent. And spring sports are underway. Kennedy teams will surprise a lot of people with the talent that I have seen. And the district-wide Veep food drive will be the week of April 24th through April 28th. We expect seventy thousand pounds district-wide. And Kennedy and the Gus Davis Orchestra will be presenting a joint performance tomorrow, March 28th at 7:30 in the Kennedy Auditorium. And I got a chance to see the Rhythm in Gold along with ESS perform on Thursday and was amazed with their performance. And then since the last time I got to speak at a meeting, I got the chance to attend multiple leadership meetings. One thing they asked us to do is to think about what you would like to change and how you plan on to do it. So I'm going to express one thing that I would love to change about Kennedy, and that is the influence of different cultures. Kennedy is so diverse and our differences had brought so many people together, yet so many people still don't understand everyone's culture. So for next school year, I plan on celebrating each other's heritages by making opportunities and reach out to public speakers who can speak about their culture during academic seminar.
Okay, for a short update of what is happening here at Jefferson in the next couple of months, winter sports ended strongly and spring sports are starting to take off. We are in the middle of MCA testing and the juniors will be taking the ACT on April 19th. Student council is working on spreading positivity, especially stressing unity throughout Jefferson. We are working on teaming up with the Diversity Day Committee and the STAR Committee to figure out how to make it more welcoming for everyone. We are also starting to work on different projects to raise money to donate to a certain organization. And then like Ethan said, the district-wide food drive is coming up in April. And today, the BSAC met along with students from all three middle schools to start discussing not only the food drive, but also the climate of all of the schools and the policies that are currently put into place. National Honor Society is hosting another showing of the variety show during the day on March 29th. Jefferson's DECA team won second place in the first group and are now headed to nationals. The connection special is April 21st, 22nd, and 23rd in the auditorium. And spring break is coming up and then only a couple of short months until the end of the school year.
Thank you for those reports. And I'll turn it over to, oh yeah, we need someone to read the motion too. If we'd like to do that. Who'd like to do that?
All right, I'll read this one. Make sure I have the right one. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the vendors and rates for district group insurance for the twelve-month period from July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018, per the attached memo. Good with saying that, David, or do you need me to read them all?
And you can just cite them as listed below.
All right, I will cite them as listed below.
Second.
What, is it further?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Further be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271, per its organization meeting of January 9th, 2017, authorized as the superintendent or his designee to execute documents with the authorized budget as appropriate to the daily operations of the school district.
Second.
Okay, Chair Oliva, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board. This is a pretty straight renewal to previous years. So I'm not going to cover it in a lot of detail because it was all pretty much zero increase. So the only thing I will point out is the preferred one insurance company pick reinsurance for self-funded health insurance. We did see an increase for the 17, 18 school year of fifty-four percent. So I'm just going to point that one out because that is change. But other than that, we've renewed straight across the board at zero percent for the year. We moved to one format for resolutions for all of our insurance carriers. I think they believe that was in 2010. And you should be used to this format because that's how we've presented it before. Any questions? All in all, very favorable, so.
Just one, just a more clarification, what you just said about the pick rate. Insurance is increasing fifty-four percent. That could be a whole bunch of money. So I don't know if you can like break that down. How much is that actually?
I think Ryan would have to supply that. I don't have that number with me tonight.
Well, because I'm just looking at a chart here and it's going from like fifty-three dollars to eighty-two dollars. So is that per member?
That was family, the other one is single.
I can't remember what it is.
We can get back to you on that.
Yeah, we'll have to get back to you on that one.
Is that, would you consider a large increase in that? Or is that about what we've been seeing last couple of years?
It is not what we've been seeing. So we can talk more about the renewals in health insurance as we talk about the board resolutions that are coming up on health insurance. I had a line item for insurance committee report. So maybe I'll include that right now because we kind of skipped that one and moved to this one. The insurance committee predominantly, since we talked about it last time at the board, has been centering on a renewal process. We went out for bid and in that process, we only received one bid from carriers. People would, I mean, there's many reasons. We heard from some of the vendors that the hit-up process and that bid process to put together a complete bid just is difficult for insurers. So they're being more choosy on who they're sending complete bids out to because it is a lot of work for an insurer to do that. And they also didn't feel that they might be competitive necessarily with the pool that we currently have. We have had some high cases the last few years. And it looks like this year, we're going to continue to have some high cases. So that will affect your stop loss and your renewal on that process. But all in all, we still have a very strong plan. So it's not that detrimental to our plan, but we did not get any other bids except that one.
Okay. And it's not really affecting the overall out-of-pocket expense from members, or is it?
No. I mean, we set our insurance rates and I'll talk about that. The committee did approve an increase to those rates, but we'll get to that.
But I don't want people to get alarmed when they hear fifty-four percent increase of thinking that their premiums are going to, you know, a couple hundred dollars a month or something.
Absolutely not. That's a piece of the whole picture of insurance.
... realize about it is the rates went down significantly the last couple of years. And now they're just getting back up to where they were, probably about three or four years ago.
All right, okay, thank you.
So since I went out of order, would you like to, should we back up to number two so you can have your?
That is literally what I would have said about the insurance committee. Because we really have centered, we've only met like two or three times since the last time I gave an update to the board. And it's all been about the renewals and the process and the bid and what we're going to do, plan increases and plan design changes. And I'll talk about that when we get there.
Yeah, on the number two, the fact that this is the reinsurance aspect with, we don't know what the state is going to be doing with the feds and other things like that, you know, the whole concept of reinsurance, if that's going to bother our self-funded or group plan too. So maybe administration could check out a couple of those things and get back to us.
Sure. Okay, let's vote on this one. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, let's move on to number four here.
Mr. Chair. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 sets the monthly premium rates recommended by the district insurance consultant and district self-funded group insurance programs for the twelve-month period from July 1, 2017 to June 30th, 2018, and for the district self-funded group and the insurance program for the twelve-month period for July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019, per the attached memo. For the 17, 18, and 19, or for the 2017, 18, and the 2018, 19 increase insurance premiums three percent each year. No change to deduction amounts or maximum out-of-pocket amounts per IRS regulations for 17, 18. No change in dental insurance premiums for 17, 18.
Second.
Continue on with the conversation. As I said, all three of these kind of all go together. So as stated, there was no change to deductible amounts. The IRS did not change those limits for high deductible plans. So for 17, 18, we know that deductibles are not going to increase and out-of-pocket amounts are not going to increase. We did have a change in dental plan that the group did decide on. We are going to be adding, we have white fillings in the back, front teeth, but we're also adding it to the back teeth currently that we're going to be adding to the plan. And we're increasing the maximum. And we're increasing the maximum amount of coverage or payout each year, I think, but that way, from 1,200 per individual up to 1,500 per individual. That plan is very healthy and we can, the LMC or the insurance group did think that we could support that type of change. So that was something that the insurance group did change, so you'll be seeing that change effective July 1st for dental. For health insurance, we didn't do any plan changes, but we did do a minimum increase of 3% each year. The plan actually is very healthy. I think it's doing well, even with the changes and, you know, we do have some high cases, but again, you're going to get that occasionally. I don't think it's, I think our balance and our funding from what I see and what Rod has talked about is still very positive. So as far as self-funding, we have a very well-run plan, so.
Questions?
Well, obviously healthcare has been quite the hot topic nationally in the past couple of weeks and we've been hearing these horror stories of no premium hikes of double digits, 30%, 100%. And then I see this one and it's a 3% increase. And I'm wondering, how is that in line with our state average? If you have any idea, or if you're hearing anything from other school districts, what their insurance rates are doing? Because this 3% seems extremely low comparing what we're hearing from other places.
I will research that and I'll let you know.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we will now move to number five. I'd like to read this one.
Mr. Chair.
Chair, Director Bartolata.
Resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 set district contributions to district group insurance for all employees for the 12-month period from July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018, and to district group health insurance for all employees for the 12-month period from Ju, July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019, per the attached memo.
Second.
Thank you.
Again, this is just an outline of how the cost will change for our health insurance. The rates were included on the previous resolution as well. It overlays the health savings account. What they dug deductible is dental insurance. We haven't changed, you know, anything except part of, we enhanced the plan slightly. Long-term disability and life insurance, there aren't any changes to that. So it's just kind of outlining what you kind of already have heard.
And any questions?
So I'm looking at the, the employee share and district share for these increases and, and we're continuing to do for employee-only, the district covers all of those costs. And then we're looking at the increases for the employee one and family. It's about $15 a year for all, a month for each of those. And, but for the district, it's about $40 for each one of those plans. I'm wondering if you had any idea of like how much of an addition for the district is this total? And we're looking, how much more money is the district contributing to the, the health insurance?
I haven't costed that out per employee.
$360,000.
So that's the addition, $360,000? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do it right. Hold on a second, okay.
Tell those of who oppose.
No, I said who opposed first.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, okay. All those in favor of, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move on to number six. I'm still learning my job, I apologize.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 authorizes administration to develop plans to hold an operating referendum election in November 2017.
Turn it over to Rod Ziffkevich.
Chair Oliva, members of School Board, Superintendent Fujitaki. Tonight, administration is bringing forth a resolution to develop a plan for holding an operating referendum this November. We make this request nearly 10 years to the month when we, when this body unanimously approved a similar resolution for the current operation levy. Tonight's vote is timely as the maximum duration of approved referendum is 10 years. Our current operating referendum will expire at the end of the 2018-19 school year. Therefore, your approval of this resolution tonight officially begins the process, leads up to the election in November. We will provide periodic updates throughout the process to keep you informed of the different aspects that the board still needs to make decisions on throughout.
I'll open up for questions.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say I think it's, it's timely. It's, it's ready to get going.
So we've, this conversation is, we've had this conversation before, we've talked about it before. Just so everyone knows, we aren't, this isn't the first time we've ever heard about a possible referendum coming up. We, you know, it's been, we're what, seven years into the current one, eight years into the current one?
Eight years.
Eight years in the current one. So we knew it expires in the next two years, so I think if we're going to do it now, would be the time, so. Anybody else?
A quick question, being that the Director Corman isn't here, I know she can't proxy vote or anything, but do we have anything, her opinion, she shared with you or anything?
Yes, as a matter of fact. Look at that, I have a letter that I also almost forgot to read and I apologize. My head isn't here today. This message is from Board Member Nellie Corman. Please accept my sincere apology for not being in attendance for this very important vote tonight. Please know that I am in support of holding an election this fall for this needed funding for our students and our schools. If I was present tonight, my vote for this resolution would be a yes. So that was Director Corman's thoughts, so. Anything else? Okay. All those in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And it carries.
Thank you.
Which will then bring us to number seven, which I have a note. The School Board, Superintendent, Legal Counsel, and Members of the Cabinet met in closed session on March 13th for the purpose of discussing negotiations for all bargaining units. No School Board action was taken or required. Crosses out number seven, brings us to Board Member Reports. Who would like to start us off? Director Bergstrom?
May as well. All right, Mr. Chair, I, I'd like to report, just I'll tag on to what Ethan had mentioned about the Kennedy Science Olympiad. Mr. Doty's team competed in the, in the state meet in early March at Bethel University, finished eighth place out of 33 teams. So they were, they were very, very happy to, to see what they had done. They were just a few points away from one of their closest competitors and Mr. Doty wanted to make sure that I, that I shared this information. He's very, very proud of the team, as, as, as all of us are, I'm sure. Made it to the 10th Annual Bloomington Speech Showcase. I was only able to stay for half of them, but it was just amazing. It was, it was, it's really, really interesting to hear these kids get up. It was over here at the Oak Grove Middle Auditorium. I'll run through them real quickly. There was extemporaneous reading, oral interpretation, humor, oratory, serious prose. There was a duo in there, another serious prose, and then some more humor. So there were eight presentations. There was a initial presenter and then there were three or four or five other students that would get up and do a shorter version within those categories. And this is, I think, the third or fourth year that I've been able to make it. And it's, it just gets better every year. It's just was, it was fantastic. So kudos and shout-out to all of those involved in making the, the Bloomington Speech Showcase, Showcase happen. It's a lot of fun to see. Also, at the State of the City address, it was this last Wednesday, I believe, it was really nice to see that when the city manager, Mr. Verbuggi, and the mayor, Winstead, and our mayor for the day, were up giving their presentation, they blended very nicely commentary about the, the school district and what the school district is doing. As a matter of fact, they finished the, the presentation with a musical number by Normandale Hills Elementary Teacher Jeff Zupfer, Mr. Z. Everybody knows him as Mr. Z. And he came out with his singing minstrels and they went up on stage and Mr. Z was interacting with the, with the audience and having everybody sing. It was a lot of fun. And it, it really shows, I think, the, the city's commitment to all, and when all means all, it's, it's all. So the schools are involved as well as what the city is doing. So it was really, really interesting to see that. And as long as we're talking about the schools, I want to put in a, a quick plug for the Education Foundation. Bloomington is inviting everyone who can to the Bloomington Public Schools 100th Birthday Party. It's the all-school reunion, the Friday, May 19th, starts at 6 o'clock. It is at the Bloomington Doubletree Hotel on 78th, 7800 Normandale Boulevard. So you can buy a ticket or however, however you want, you can call, send an email to centennial@isd271.org and we'll get you set up. So don't forget that, it's a centennial birthday party. That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Just one other thing quickly. The Bloomington Advocacy Council met last week. This is a newly formed group. I think that was our third meeting and primarily went over bills and things that are going on in the legislature that affect our school right now. And the group will be making their first visit to the Capitol on Monday. So looking forward to attending with the new group of advocates advocating for Bloomington schools, so it should be good. Thank you.
I wanted to piggyback on what our student representative said earlier. The BSAC met with some Veep advisors, a representative from Veep and Tiffany Schirmack from our PTA here in Bloomington. And our goal for this year is to raise 70,000 pounds of food. And it seems like a huge number, but I had them do some quick math and I said, okay, there's 70,000 pounds of food and there's 10,000 students, how many pounds is that per student? And oh, that's only seven pounds per student. And I said, and each dollar, if you just contribute a dollar instead of food, that's five pounds worth of food. So how many quarters does each student need to bring in in order for us to reach our goal? And they said, oh, that would be about six-quarters of student. I said, now, do we think we could motivate everyone to bring in six-quarters? If we tell people we need to raise 70,000 pounds, a lot of people will just give up. But if you say, all I need from you is six-quarters, and one student even said, yeah, and if they can't bring all six, we can have two-quarter Tuesday, four-quarter Friday, and they can spread it out, make two, two installments, and there we have it. We'll reach our goal. And that 70,000 pounds will feed our community for a week. And so when we use that sort of, when we put into those, that perspective and say, if everyone can just contribute six-quarters, we can feed our whole entire community for a week. I think it's, it's a valuable thing that we can strive for and certainly make. The other thing is on the...
Mr. Chair, excuse me, while you're on, while you're on Veep, we have a volunteer who's served on Veep and works over there as part of the JAG Corps project. So I'm sure she wants to say how many hundreds of items that she has to deal with on a daily basis.
Yeah, I go there every week, well, second trimester I did, and like the whole warehouse is just full of food. So it's crazy, like sorting it all and like seeing all the different donations that come in, so it's super cool.
Well, thank you for volunteering and contributing to our community. On the 20th, Directors Bartolata, Bergstrom, and myself received this proclamation from the city, from Mayor Gene Winstead. And I'll just read the bottom. It says, "Now therefore, I, Gene Winstead, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim 2016-17 as the Bloomington Public Schools 100th Anniversary Year." So I said I'd bring this and hand it to our superintendent so he can frame it, put it on his wall, his office. And that would, no other Board Member reports, that'll bring us to Superintendent Report.
Great, thank you. The first is a request for motion. School Board has a series of professional development sessions where they talk about equity. We're requesting a motion to establish a professional development session on the 29th of March, beginning at 6:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Thank you. First, next is an announcement, no School Board meeting on April 10th. That's the week of spring break. So that meeting has been canceled. The next is another motion, request for a motion to establish a study session on April 24th, on Monday, April 24th, upon conclusion of regular board meeting scheduled that day. So requested for a study session on April 24th.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Okay. The next is an announcement, Senior Achievement Recognition Banquet. Every year we'll hold this banquet. 129 high school seniors, over 60 from each high school, have been invited as a guest of honor at the Bloomington Senior Recognition Banquet on Monday, April 3rd, at the Airport Hilton. Students ranked in the academic top 10% of a class of 2017 will be honored along with students who are selected for excellence in areas of art, curricular leadership, and volunteerism. I'm going to recognize the event sponsors because it's important, because we couldn't hold this event without their help. First is the Ball of America, the Education Foundation of Bloomington, Richfield Bloomington Credit Union, the Jefferson PTA, the Kennedy PTA, Daymakers Rotary, Sun Current, Airport Hilton, and last but not least, the School Board. So thank you very much for your support for this event.
Thank you.
That concludes my report. Okay. Well, I have one thing, I just learned today that the Innovation Zone Bill that Dr. Heist and I have been working on, last year we moved the bill along in the session, it reached all the way to, we didn't get into any of the omnibus bills. This year, we just learned, we made the Senate Education Omnibus Bill with that language. So hopefully, we can take it forward and it can pass the joint conference and come up with the overall omnibus, make the overall omnibus bill. So we're crossing our fingers. We'll keep you informed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to come before the board? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
In the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Okay.